All right. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the city council meeting of Tuesday, June 10th. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance as we begin? Flag is on the other side today.
Oh, my God. I did that, too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I start with a roll call, please?
Westwood?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Daniels?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Ronnie?
Here.
Rude?
Yes.
Tubman?
Here.
I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. I don't think there's any surprise stuff that we haven't talked about. Oh, that's not true. There is one, the interim attorney contract is something and we can talk about it at the time. I think we've got, we talked about that during the meetings, but that's the only thing that has popped up without having gone through a below the fold cycle.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tubman?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 27th.
I move to approve the minutes of May 27th, 2025.
I'll second.
Motion from Councilmember Ronnie, second from Councilmember Daniels. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Can I get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tubman?
Yes.
Six oh, the motion passes. I'll entertain a motion on the warrants payable.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants payable.
Do you have, were you the signer? Oh, okay. Do you have, you want to say anything?
I don't. Well, you say, Conley, if you want to second it.
I'll second. There we go.
All right. A motion from Councilmember Tubman, a second from Councilmember Rude. Discussion.
Our warrant's total, 700, 700,000. I don't know how big.
749,000.
581.
And 14 cents.
And as usual, Republic was $47,000. And the two big ones were the sewer repaying the bonds. One of 177,000 and one to 236,000. So for sewer and water bonds. And that's it. I didn't have any problems with anything.
There was, there was one on there that I heard somebody question. The city hired a contractor to go down and pull some stuff from the Rocky Fork property that we're going to be able to repurpose and use here. So we, we, it was, we hired somebody to go get that stuff out of there before it gets taken down. Like primarily doors.
I didn't think we were, we were told we couldn't, no one could salvage anything.
No, we, we can because we're the owners of it. We can't sell it.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. That would, but we, but we can use it. So it's like, okay, thank you for that information. We'll go do it.
Oh, yeah. You could use some doors.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's get a roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tubman?
Yes.
Six oh, the motion passes. All right. Mayor's business. Rock Creek. We're actually, the water level's down today. The last week, we've been, we went up a couple of days ago, but we're still well below our crest of even last year. We continue to watch, keep an eye on it. For those who are interested, you can go to the city webpage and get the, get the link and put it on your phone. Just when you think you have it predicted, like I said, today we're down, even as hot as it was. We were up a little bit, yes, and then it went down, down. So we'll keep an eye on that. Having said that, we did get the major portion of the bank reconstruction down on Ninth, Tenth Cooper. There's a punch list there, but, but the substantial portion of that is done, which means we are prepared and that won't be rode away and take our utilities with it. Rent fair. Was a success. I didn't get any reports of shutdown. Big shout out to the folks at the airport who provided some extra parking and also the folks at BHA who came and handled the parking up there, night and day difference over last year. There was also a secondary feature that there was some bridge construction going on in Joliet that was a sign that the thinking was, that was very convenient for us because they sent the carts through in blocks of 50 and then they were done. Other community announcements. The pool is open today. As always, if you know anybody who's interested in being lifeguards or instructors, we can still put them to use. The only other thing is there's an issue taking credit cards right now at the pool. So that should be resolved by Monday, but if folks go down there, they're basically taking their information at their locals and getting a pool pass. We may look at resending them, see if we can send them down to the office for the next couple of days during the week, just to see if they can take the money here to do that. So we're doing everything we can to be accommodating on that. The bear aware committee. We've got some signs that there, we're, we're working on getting FWP. Mike has put together a GIS program they're going to use to go through and do inventory and kind of check trash cans, which will be a hands-on approach to kind of see where trash cans are working and not working. We did kind of related there. We did get the RFP from Republic back. It was underwhelming and then it didn't have any of the details they had talked to us about. So I guess we're, Mike's going to be meeting with them and having the conversation to go into the contract. So that's where the details are going to come in. We're going to set like how, what's their turnaround going to be time when we report a broken lock? What are they going to do? So there's, there's still some things to be worked out before we bring that to council. Questions?
What about the, it's justing they have bear proof everywhere. What did they say about that?
They, they didn't say anything, but we will address it in our, in our, so all the city services stuff. They, they did say that they use bear proof cans, but remember that our contract is for the city services that's there. One of the things that came up this morning, the, the public health and safety actually was revisiting the trash ordinance very specifically with, with bears in mind. Daniel was there. One of the suggestions that did come up is that on dumpsters, we can require that they have a bear proof container next to it from a city ordinance standpoint. So because otherwise people come by and just throw their hamburger in the, in the can that's open. But if there's a bear proof can and we say that, that, that attractants need to be in a sealed can and we make sure that it's there, that's not, that's not a contract with Republic. That's just, we tell people that's the requirement. So, so like I said, we're looking at addressing that.
But that was specific to construction dumpsters, correct?
Yeah. With, with a construction dumpster, that they would be also required to have a, a, a sealable. If, if their construction dumpster wasn't sealable, then they could have a sealable can next to it as part of their contract.
And like, I have a construction dumpster. I can in theory bring my dumpster, my garbage can around and it could be useful.
Yeah. So if somebody's walking by and going to break the rule that says you don't throw your trash in somebody else's trash can, hopefully they'll at least throw the hamburger in the, in the bear, bear one. Okay. Any other questions on that? It just, just bears are kind of in the discussion, so I wanted to say we are continuing to move forward on that. Just at a high level, I have a letter into the league. The tax changes that they made that go into effect at the end of this year. This was the, the tax rate and the, a different rate for rentals and, and versus. There's also a secondary thing, actually it's not tight to that. As you know, our budget every year, regardless of how much our property taxes go up, our budget has been going up at one half the rate, average rate of inflation over the last three years. This year, they made a change that'll go into effect in December that says it'll go up actual rate of inflation up to 4%. If they had quit there, we would have no complaints. The additional change that they threw in is that any new development, we only get 40% of, as opposed to 100% of. What we're trying to figure out is, A, what that means. Now, overall, I don't think that part is going to impact the city directly. Where will impact us is, I think it puts a little bit of an accelerator pedal on the annexations we've been talking about. If we're going to get 100% of the taxable value of Remington, for instance, if that's completed before December 31st and we're only going to get 40% of it, if it's completed by January, that puts that as a priority project between now and the end of the year. So we're getting confirmation on that, but just to give you a heads up, I think we're going to have some discussions on that in the future.
Where does the other 60% go?
Uh huh. If you find that out, let me know. So, so because that's the, if we get one half the rate of inflation, and so the answer I've gotten so far is it's basically the school equalization portion of the budget. Cause like it's going someplace and it's not the locals. So where is it going?
Will they consider if we annex the property that those aren't new, will we get to pull them out?
I, that's what I'm confirming. But I believe that, 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 that's the assumption. There was also a question, if it impacted the URD and if this was one of their, one of their moves to help, is that they had to get away from URDs. The gut reaction right now, and we'll, we'll get the, we'll wait till we get the official legal from, from the league, but the gut reaction is we don't necessarily, it's not going to impact the URD because we get that taxable value, even though it's going into a different bucket, it's getting recognized each year. And so the big question there is if you look at all the developments that up, up at Alpine, if, if we were to cancel the, if, if canceling the URD before December 31st meant we got 100% of that and not doing it meant we got 40% of it, well, now that's a really straightforward answer. But I don't think that's the way it is. But again, we've reached out to the legal experts to get that input. So we are looking at it. We're evaluating it and I'll keep you posted, but I suspect we're going to try to, to get the annexations moving forward more quickly. I did a follow-up with Mike. Basically for us, since we're already providing those services, what we're basically picking up is a little bit of extra patching and then snow plowing during the year. We would have to buy an additional piece of equipment, but the tax, additional tax base would far offset that.
In that situation, if there's, for instance, a house that gets built because there's plenty of vacant lots still in a lot of these areas, would the city be responsible then to provide water versus?
No. So we do not have, we do not have to provide water because water's not there. So, and we have regulations about if water's within such and such a timeframe. And, and that was, that was another one of the questions that kind of came up when this first came up, would come about annexation. Does it address water and it, it does not have to. There are, there are several places in the city where we don't provide it. All right. You are, speaking of urban renewal, the KSU folks came two weeks ago, had a really good feedback. We're expecting their feedback within 60 days. So we'll keep you posted of, of when that's going to happen. Bank reconstruction, I already mentioned that that's done except for basically some restoration efforts to, 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 to make sure that the neighbors whose land we were working on are happy with that. And we will continue to work with them to make sure that they're, they're satisfied. But overall, like I said, it's, what we're talking about is the finished polish. The only other thing that I had is just a reminder to council that there's a municipal summit on Thursday, July 10th that's available. So, so that's, I, I sent that, I forwarded that email on to everybody. You're welcome to go join that. The community is also welcome to join those. That's just kind of how to be on city council and, and the rules and discussions there. Anything else for me? All right. Seeing none. At this point in the agenda, we're moving to public comment. For those who may be new here, we actually have multiple opportunities for public comment on the agenda. This one is you're welcome to speak to the city about anything on, within the city's purview. There will be a, a similar like comment period at the end of the agenda. And then for each of the action items that we're taking action on, there will be public comment before we take action on each of those. So with that, this is a timed public comment. So you'll have three minutes. Please, if you would start by giving your name for the record and then address your comments to the chair. That's me. It's not a discussion. It's not a back and forth. It's just an opportunity to speak to, to, to be heard by the council. And with that, I will go ahead and start the, open the public comment and we'll go to the room first. Anybody in the room? Seeing none in the room, we'll go to online. If you're online, if you can turn on your camera, raise a hand or unmute to be some sort of indication to call on you. Going once, twice, and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that section of the public comment. Thank you. All right. That takes us the action portion of the menu. I will entertain a motion for resolution number 3696.
I will make a motion to approve resolution 3696, a resolution of the city council of the city of Red Lodge, Montana, calling for an election on the question of disallowing the following marijuana businesses from operating within the city limits of Red Lodge Commercial Cultivator.
I second.
Motion from Councilmember Tubman, second from Councilmember Ronnie. Discussion at the table.
From the sounds of it, this has been sent over to the county, but we are not going to get a final okay until after we actually vote and submit. In terms of language, ballot language being appropriate for what they want.
Yeah. They, they gave a rough, they didn't see any concerns, but we didn't get the response that I was expecting based on previous conversation.
Yep. On a whole though, I think we've had plenty of conversation on this and can put, put it to the voters.
And I think it's worth mentioning that the commercial operations in town are actually supporting this and were, in fact, who came to us and made the recommendation against commercial grow operations within the city. Any further discussion at the table? All right. Hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and go to public comment. This is public comment specifically tied to putting the ballot language on the ballot in November. Opening the public comment, looking to the room. Seeing nothing in the room, going to online. Once, twice, three times no comment. We'll go ahead and close the public comment. Back to the table. Any last comments at the table? Can I get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes. Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tubman?
Yes.
Six zero, the motion passes. I'll entertain a motion for number 3697.
I will make a motion to approve resolution number 3697, a resolution of the city council of the city of Red Lodge, Montana, for additional provisions for permitted use of Pride Parks. I will second.
All right. Motion from Councilmember Tubman, and I think the second was Councilmember Daniels. Discussion at the table.
Yeah. We had a lot of discussion this morning, specific around this resolution, and I think it's definitely worth recognizing and potentially revisiting. So essentially what we're having concerns about is the commercial use. There's still that issue of folks not wanting to see commercial use in the park. I think that there is a lot of conversation about having no use and having it just be a place of respite.
With, with the exception of the MOU permitted use for the garden club.
Correct.
Okay.
So with how we have this written now, we have a few different options on the table. Again, one, I think it's only fair that the rest of council gets the opportunity to see some of the commentary that we've had and that the community has a chance to speak to it as well. But I'd also like to get some more opinions from the folks within our community that can, again, I don't think it's fair to have 10 people that came that have the opportunity to come to these meetings to have the only voice in the room. So also there was some email correspondence that I received yesterday and today, I don't know if the rest of council receives these. So I think it's also only fair that that's included in the packet as well as made available to the rest of council. Specifically, there was correspondence from Betsy Scanlon of her concerns of multi-use within the state. I think we covered a lot of her questions today, but I think those concerns are still there. And then there was also one that I would like to have Dennison review, specific to saying that there should actually be an amendment to ordinance 960 versus a resolution. And I feel like we've sent this through Dennison once or twice at this point.
Yeah.
And so.
There, there was an edit that they proposed for the, the resolution that I actually liked the, the kind of the whereabouts within the resolution that I thought met it well.
Exactly. And I think that, I think it all merits, I guess I shouldn't even have voted to approve it tonight. I think I would like to see this table.
Well, we have to, we have to put it, we have to open it so we can make them, I'll entertain a motion if you.
Yeah. I will make a motion to table this for another session. I'll second.
Motion to table by Councilmember Tubman, a, a second from Councilmember Daniels, and now we'll have discussion.
I'm concerned with our timing here. If we don't get this done, then we have the car show coming up. We have all of the July downtown things going on and there's no rules against it. So I, I, as much as I would like to get everybody's opinion on it, we're sitting here at, at June 10th and it takes 30 days for it to come.
No, it doesn't. Not, not a resolution. Yeah.
So I, I'm concerned about the timing.
And the one thing I'll speak to on that is Brian Hanna has already been putting special conditions, which is permitted within 960 to ensure that it's staying as close to our resolution as we can for what he's received. So for instance, there have been permits allowed that did have special provisions on those. So that are trying to keep it as close to this resolution. So the other option that we do have is that we can approve this right now, and I, and I'm not opposed to this idea. I'm just trying to, again, give merit where merit is due and keep conversations alive when they need to be. We could approve this now because all this does is provide some additional restrictions. And then if we feel that it did not go well and did not provide what we needed, we can reassess in the fall and potentially make the changes that we want. It might be that we further restrict it, or we might get through the summer and realize this seems to do what we wanted it to do. And that it hasn't created conflict between the community as well as the, the folks that are visiting, anything along those lines. So that's, those are kind of our options there. Or we could amend this as is, but I would prefer not to amend this at the meeting. I feel like if we are making changes, they're substantial enough that it requires some rewrite and time and thoughtfulness put into it.
Councilmember Ronnie.
I was asked today, too, why we did a resolution versus an ordinance. And the park itself was dedicated via a resolution, which set out the uses of that park, you know, the designation. So I, I, you know, it's definitely a Dennison question, but restricting or changing those uses of the park, to me, it's fine as a resolution and not part of the ordinance. So, you know, that was kind of my response to that. But I, I'm fine with getting Dennison's viewpoint of that, but changing the ordinance is going to be two readings and 30 days and it's going to be a big deal. And I'll just say that personally, I don't think that that park is big enough to allow permitted events or uses in there. And still keep the park inviting for our visitors to sit and still relax in that area. So my, my wish would be that we just amend the ordinance and I'm fine waiting in, for two weeks and just say, there will be no exclusive use or permitted use of Pride Park.
Well, as the ordinance reads right now, it already says there's no exclusive use.
Right.
But did you have an opportunity to seize a map and are you okay with those approved locations?
I, I just don't think they're big enough for anyone to.
I just think of folks like the art walks or people that have a table set up in that space or musicians.
So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to go around here and I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak once before somebody gets a chance to speak twice. So I'll, I'll kind of direct the conversation here for a minute. So just to, just to kind of summarize where I think we are, there, there are multiple layers. There's one, which is what we have right now that I think everybody was not good with, which is that falls under the same reservation practices as all of the city owned land. Hundred dollar administration fee to, to set that up and there were some concerns with that. There's the resolution as presented, which tries to narrow that down to a couple of specific areas, but does not limit it on the nature of the use. The two versions that we heard today, interestingly enough, one of them was it's a respite park, which is just don't allow it to be reserved and, and, and saved out. Now, what that means is nobody would be able to do commercial use in that because of the way the ordinance is already done. You'd have to do a land use and if it's not eligible to do it, then you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to do it. But, but people showing up, and it's, and it's, and it's worth calling out, there were some folks that were concerned that this means that we can't do protest there or people, no, it does not, it does not inhibit social gatherings, First Amendment rights at all. There was another version that said you allow these uses, but not for commercial uses. And, and, and I'll let council member speak to that, but my understanding is there are some folks who say, let's not treat commercials versus nonprofits differently, but that was part of the discussion today. So that's, that's kind of what I heard is that do nothing, shut it down to respite, and then the two variations of we allow minimal use, but limit that to not commercial or it is commercial. So with that, I'm going to start on this end. What'd you get for being quite earlier?
Sorry. No. Um, yeah, no, I was, I, in the meeting this morning and yeah, it was, I could, I'm glad that they voiced their concern. Again, Pride Park is, it's not like all the other parks. And I, I do have a hard time like allowing for use like this. With that being said, like I felt like we kind of came to a, a compromise with, all right, well, we will allow it, but in this very small designated area, take it or leave it. Like I feel like we're already, and I feel like we just keep putting restriction, restriction, restriction on certain things and I'm, I don't know. I need, I'm happy either way. Another comment that was brought up this morning was, okay, well, if this is a thing, is it like for an eight hour time? Is it a four hour time? Should we put an hour restriction on the day they use it? Because for instance, when we have the band come down or music festivals about to take place, when those kids come down, they are utilizing that space for at the most a few hours. Like, you know, I, I kind of feel like a girl scout stand, are they going to be utilizing it for an entire day? You know, will our art walk people who need it, are they just setting up for an introduction for that morning? You know, there's, I feel like we can keep adding restrictions or just mix the whole thing and keep it for respite.
Do you have one of those you're leaning toward at all?
Not at all.
Councilmember Conley.
Um, I've been out on the discussions, not this morning, but leading up to this. And personally, I think it should be a respite. I mean, it's really simple. It's, it's, they have plenty of other places that they could go. They could sell their Girl Scout cookies on private property like they have done in the past. They could art walk, they could actually set up a table in front of one of the galleries and give people. I don't think that this park needs that. I, I would like to see this park strictly as a respite.
Councilmember Conley? I'm Ronnie.
Okay. Yeah. I, one thing that you need to understand that if we say there's no exclusive or permitted use, you can still use the park. You can still, you're just not asking for that exclusive use.
And you can't use it commercially.
You cannot use it, you cannot sell things on that property, but ordinance 960 does not exclude people from having an impromptu jam session with a pop-up band. You know, I'm not still allowed. Or the music festival setting up to, to sing some songs. They're not coming in to get a permit for that anyway. That's not a permitted use. That's just a, a casual like, let's get together and, you know, sing a song kind of thing. So that would not be affected. Now, if it's anything that is sold where they're selling something, nonprofit or for profit, so Girl Scout cookies, yes, would be affected. But, but it also would not exclude the, the garden club. They could still have their, their plant sale because they have an MOU.
They have an MOU.
And they're excluded from the permitted use application anyway. So yes, I, I did look at the map. I just think it's such a small area and for the people that have been utilizing it, I mean, that's, it's going to be very hard for them to fit in that area. So I mean, I think we should just nip it in the bud and just change it so that there's no permitted.
There'll be no exclusive use.
Yeah. Or permitted use.
All right. Councilmember Davis.
I think that I agree with what they've said. It is a small space. It is the only one like it of its kind. It is a place to me for downtime without having to, you know, worry about somebody. selling me something, whether it's a profit or nonprofit. I like the respite idea. I think we need to respect that it's a public space, even though all the public parks are, or city parks are, but also, maybe it's an original intended use, and the people who helped create it, and the people who maintain it, and the people who keep it still vibrant and available and clean for everyone else's public enjoyment, instead of using it for renting out for a hundred dollars, to kind of encroach upon that public space, where it's the only one of its kind in downtown. So, I, I would probably want to say I agree with Jody on no permitted use for it.
The respite use of the park?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Councilmember Rude.
I didn't know that it was impossible to have respite until today, and I'm all for it. I would, the park is getting a new start, a fresh start. I, I like having the respite idea, that it's special. And you said something about maybe going, living with it for a few months and revisiting. That's really, things are hard to change when you live with it for, and you come back. So, I'm just going, I go, "Let's go respite," I like that idea.
Okay, Councilmember Tupin.
Again, I don't have issue with having it as respite. Wanted to provide opportunity for small vendors to be able to come in and have a space, and be able to provide a craft or a service. End of the day, though, I think it does come down to what the community says. It still would like to take a couple of weeks to give this a redraft. The one thing I would say is, I don't want this just to be a span on commercial. I think if we don't want people selling something, whether that's a service or an idea, I think that it should be consistent.
Meaning, meaning not a distinction between commercial versus nonprofit selling stuff, or?
Right, yeah.
So, so, I have a question. So, so, one of the ideas that kind of came up today is that the current resolution, 3697, if we just primarily stripe everything beyond, there will be no exclusive use of Pride Park that kind of meets that respite need, and counts as a limitation on there. The motion on the table currently is to postpone action of this, and technically, we're supposed to have a date certain, did you want to say that was for?
Uh, for the following council meeting, you go-
The June?
Twenty-fourth, twenty-
Okay. Yeah, it'd be June 24th, June 24th.
June 24th. So, there's a motion to table this for two weeks, and come back with the changes that feels like changes with this refining to, toward the goal of a respite park. Am I, am I hearing that correctly? And so, so, the motion on the table is to postpone. Is there any further discussion on, on the motion to postpone?
The only other thing I would say with that is it gives us the opportunity to make sure that Denison, is we are correct in the fact that this is resolution versus ordinance.
Okay. All right, hearing no further discussion, can I get a roll call on the motion to postpone?
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes. No, it's like-
Rude?
Which is really next, um, yeah.
Tupin?
Yeah.
So, you are no?
I was no.
So, five, one, the motion to postpone passes. We will have that for discussion at the, at the next meeting. And, and just to, to cover up, Councilmember Tupin, are you gonna do the, the follow-up action to prepare that?
Yep.
Thank you.
And obviously, and for anyone online, and anyone in the room, input is crucial. It's crucial. So, again, happy to hear input.
I goofed. How come nobody kicked me and said, "Hey, you need to have a public comment on this before we take a vote?"
In all fairness, we did just do it for the table.
We did vote.
Yeah, we did table, and we didn't take action on it.
But we could still-
So, having, having, having said that, because I haven't moved on, I'm gonna go ahead and open up a public comment specifically tied to the resolution regarding Pride Park. So, I'm gonna open that up. Again, if you'd like to speak, if you'd stand up here, because this is the mic that picks it up so people online can hear, address your comments to me, and I will time you to three minutes, and the electric shock starts at 2:45, just a kind warning.
My name is Terry Kelleher, and I live at 56 Mountain Brook, which is not in the city limits, but I'm here representing All Nations Garden Club. And I don't have anything properly prepared, but I do thank the committee for all the work that was done on the resolution. I felt it was protecting us and our concerns. But as we learned this morning, and I learned tonight, there is a possibility of just becoming a respite park. And of course, I think that's the, you know, that's what we all would like to see, all the members of the garden club, and also other citizens of Red Lodge. The only thing I am concerned about, we just, I mean, I would want to be sure that, you know, all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So, but, you know, I am concerned about us not having that protection in the meantime, but if it looks like it's going to happen pretty soon, then, you know, we'll, we'll hang it out for a couple more weeks, but-
And I, and I think it's worth mentioning that the events, so all the events that have been scheduled for that park so far have been told that there's a possibility that option may go away, so they've all been warned of that. However, until such time as council places a restriction on it, they, they will still be allowed and permitted in that timeframe. So, whatever's for the next two weeks before we have that, we have two Saturdays in there, we'll, we'll still continue on with our best guidance that's there.
Okay, and that was a question that I was wondering about, you know, what was going to happen to these people that already had permits, if, if Pride Park did in fact become a respite park.
They will yell at me.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council.
All right, any other comments in the room? Hearing none in the room, I'll go to online. Going once, twice, three times, and again, my apologies for not doing that. We didn't do it on the main action, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hang my hat on that, but I wanted to make sure we get people the opportunity for input there. And again, thank, the other, the other comment is, just for the public at whole, is those standing committee meetings that happened during the day on Tuesday, there's, there's, that's, that's where the, the clinking and the shaking is. So, come in and, and, and state your opportunity, and it gives council a time to work on it and, and go back and, and discuss, and, and, and we've got another couple of weeks to come back and revisit that. All right, moving on, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 3700.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3700, a resolution of the City Council and the City of Red Lodge, Montana, to approve the Red Lodge Tourism Business Improvement District Red Lodge T-Bid fiscal year 2025-2026 budget.
I'll second.
Motion from Councilmember Tupin, second from Councilmember Ronnie, discussion at the table.
We received a presentation from them last week. They have been surveying in our community and providing lots of resources for grant opportunities and marketing through our town, and trying to promote all the fun of Red Lodge, and I think that, yeah, they can continue to operate with their budget as written.
Other discussion at the table?
We need an E and improvement in the title.
Thank you. I'm glad you did it.
And if it's a spelling, I don't think we require a formal motion for that. Is there any further discussion at the table before I go to public comment on the matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. This is specifically regarding Resolution 3700 to approve the T-Bid.
Oh, that's it, that's it.
Pardon?
That's it, that's it, didn't you?
No, I really didn't, but, but, yeah. Seeing none in the room, I'll go to online. Going once, twice, we'll go ahead and close the public comment on the T-Bid, and then come back to the table. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Can I get a roll call, please?
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Motion is six, zero, motion passes. All right, I will entertain a motion regarding Revolution, Rev, Resolution-
Oh, my God.
Three-
I wish.
Am I having a stroke? Resolution 3701, grant, oh, Resolution 3701.
I move to approve Resolution Number 3701, a resolution of the City of Red Lodge to grant approval for the mayor to proceed with legal actions to acquire the necessary authority to install underground pipe along and across that portion of the private property that encroaches upon White Avenue near 23rd Street in Red Lodge, Montana.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie, second from Councilmember Daniels, discussion at the table, and then I'm going to go to discussion from the property owner who is present. So, discussion at the table first.
Um, go, you were going to speak about-
Oh, um, so, this is, um, this is for the, uh, this is in conjunction to the 16-inch water main pipe going up. As we put that together and began to look at it, it was realized that there's a, a portion of the road and, uh, road and utilities that is actually across a property owner, corner of a property owner's property. There are no recorded easements that we could identify going along with that, which is problematic. We reached out as a city to the property owner and offered to acquire that land. As there was a, a question about the dollar amount, the research is, we could offer whatever it is appraised at. We reached out to the property owner, we identified an amount of the property that, that was amiable to both parties. And when we reached out to the appraiser, they indicated that they had already done an appraisal within the last year, that there wasn't the need to do appraisal, and so that was the offer that we had put on and presented to council. The property owner had requested an opportunity, or had indicated they wanted to get a, a second appraisal, and at that time, we understood it was going to be done within a couple of weeks. My understanding is it has not happened yet, and there's, there's reasons for that. But the secondary option was, is for us to go in, in front of a judge and basically just ask for a prescriptive easement, that basically allows us to continue on with the project. And, and in fairness, if he grants that easement, then there's not a need to acquire the property either, depending on what the, what the judge's ruling on that initially would be. So, that's what we have tonight, is, is just that. Having said that, discussions still are ongoing with the property owner, and if we can come to an agreement prior to that point in time, this just opens the door and gives us, I, I want council's blessing before I go, go do something like filing for a prescriptive easement. Discussion at the table?
Timing.
Pardon?
Timing.
I don't have a crystal ball, but legal, our council has advised us that he thinks the injunction will be granted very quickly, within just a day or two, with a subsequent hearing set up to see if that injunction stays in place or comes off. So, it would initially be put in place, but there's a possibility the judge may come back at that point in time and say, "No." And, and, and one of the things is, if a judge came back and said, "No, you need to pay X or Y," then that opens up our ability to, to pay a different price for that as well. So, but the, the expectation is that that would be very quick, within a day or two. Now, depending on which attorney you ask, you may get a different answer. And whether you're on the plaintiff or the, or the respondent's side. Councilmember Davis? Thank you for raising your hand.
Thank you. I'm learning. I think it's fair for the property owner to want to get their own appraisal. I agree with that. I think the timing, too, is something to be respected for both parties involved. So, I would not want it to go to the prescriptive easement. I'd like to give both parties an agreement, you know, without having to use that other method. So, if we can agree on a time based on the appraisers, you know, if they can do that timely, then that would be great, to allow them other time to get their, their second appraisal.
Other discussion at the table?
I, I would just say, yes, I would, obviously, I, I feel our preferred method would be to purchase that property, but I do realize that there is a timing for getting this project off the ground and started and finished this summer.
Yep.
So, we can finish it this summer.
And I have, I have no objection to, to purchasing the property within the, I think, I, I mentioned it probably in the, in the committee. We did receive a counter, buy-sell, but we're advised by legal that we can't sign it. There's a, a couple of different things that made it so it's not something legal. Specifically, the one that, that jumps to my mind is, is it had a cost of $3,000 written in, which, which we legally can't do. And, and so, without, let me rephrase it, we legally can't do that without an appraisal that justifies that, or without a, or, or without a judge order that tells us to pay some different amount.
In terms of the judge, which judge would it be?
It goes to, it's, it's not a city judge, it goes to the district. I, I, and I forget who the, the name of that is. But, but, yeah, but it's, it's, it's not a-
I didn't think it would be, but I was just saying-
All right, anything further at the table before I go to public comment? All right, I'm going to go to public comment, and I'm just going to specifically, as we open public comment, I'm going to invite Michelle. If she'd like to take the opportunity to go first, she has that option.
I'm Michelle Moore, I live at 1123 White Avenue, and I would really ask you guys not to approve this, because I think you'll put an extreme financial burden on me to have to go through court and go through this. I would really like for the city to purchase this for the appraised value. I have, I've talked to realtors, I've talked to the State of Montana, I've talked to legal counsel, and what the appraisal, the appraisal company said is that they need some kind of a buy-sell in place, because if I go spend all this money on an appraisal, do all this stuff, and then the city still doesn't want to buy it, or they still want to go forward, then I'm out all this, too. And to go in to get an injunction and hold it in place for a couple of weeks, and go through a hearing, pay an attorney for all this, this is going to put a, a really unnecessary financial burden on me. How I looked at it when I purchased the property is, we gave the permission for the city to continue using the street over the land, and that it would get resolved. And three years ago, I did try to get it resolved, and I haven't tried to work with the city. And I, I don't want the road across my property, right? I would really like, now that it's been marked, it's been, it's, we're in the process of doing it, I would really, really appreciate you guys saying, "No, let us get an appraisal. Whatever it appraises at, we'll go with." We can't use an appraisal for a house, because when they appraised my house, the value of the land is based on the first 6,000 square foot, and then there's additional, and there's, there's all kinds of different things that go onto it. So, to use the appraisal of a home on two and a half city lots and take that value of their land and divide it is like apples to oranges. That's the wrong task force, it doesn't work. So, kind of like what I got from the State of Montana, for what it would be assessed at, what the value would be at, I'd heard different prices, and I would just like to get the appraisal done, but I don't want to go spend $1,500 or $2,000 for an appraisal, and then have the city say, "Oh, no, we're just going to do the work." So, I'd really like you guys to table it for a month, or to please let us just say, "No," so we can get the appraisals done and get it done with. Because what happens again, if the city needs to do work there in a couple of years, or something else needs to happen? I think it, I think it's time that we just get that area that's already been agreed to the city. So, it's purchased, it's owned, and the city has it. Does anybody have any questions for me? Because I was, I don't know if that's how it works.
I know technically I'm not-
I don't know how-
No, go, go ahead.
The only questions I do have is, I was under the impression that there was a buy-sell in place, but it was never accepted from either party. Is that correct?
So, the, what I would, what I went to an attorney for was to protect my, my use of the property so that he added an addendum to it. So, the first, the first, what it said on the first two contracts from the city is that we would get an appraised price, and I was down with that.
Yeah.
Get an appraisal, what it's worth is what we sell it for.
Yep.
Comes back at a dollar, it comes back at $100,000.
Yep.
Whatever it is, that's what it will go for. But then on the third contract, they said that they wanted to use an appraisal for a house from a year ago, from, I had HELOC, so I had my house appraised on two and a half city lots.
And I, I understand that part, just to kind of help move that along.
But, no, I get that 100%.
I was just under the impression that there was a buy-sell, and it just was not accepted from both parties. So, I just-
Yeah.
One other question on top of that, just in the sake of time. You said you did contact an appraiser, and they're not willing to do an appraisal?
Yes, they are willing to do the appraisal.
They are willing.
Yes, for sure. She, and he said, "Within a couple of weeks."
Okay.
And he's out of billing, so we can have the appraisal done. It's just that I didn't want to say, "Yes, I'm going to spend another $1,500" when I'm already spending money on an attorney that I really didn't want to have to do. I really just want to sell the land to the city.
Perfect.
But I also have to have my, my right- But I also have to have my, my rights, so that nothing can change for my home. Does that make sense?
Right, no, I get you.
The property line, you know, that's how.
You have 100%. And then, so in terms of timeline, because again, just speaking of the timeline.
And the city, one more thing real quick. The city does own plenty of land over there. I mean, the city could pipeline the pipe. The city has a whole other road. They own all that property already.
Some of this feels like discussion we'll bring once we bring it back to the table. So are you all right holding on for a second?
Totally.
All right. Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah.
All right. Any other further public comment? Nothing from the room. We'll go to online. Going once, twice, three times. We'll close the public, public comment on that, and we'll bring that back to the table. Councilmember Tupe.
A question on our timeline. I know that we're tight, and we're trying to keep on track of this project. And it also has potential for massive expenses going up if we don't get this moving. What does that look like for our Public Works Department? Do we have, like, a drop dead, where we need to have this in place, where they can actually get this grant approval and move forward, or?
I, I think we are within a couple of weeks of, of being past the point where this doesn't, where, where it doesn't work for us.
Okay.
And it pushes us to next year, and the potential of six-figure increases, because we'd have to go to a new bid and go from there.
Not to interrupt. Chad is online. I don't know-
I, I, he didn't pipe up. I asked for public comment. I figured if he wanted to pipe in, he would.
I mean, we could also, you can, like, actually ask him a question.
Yeah.
Chad, are you there?
Chad, do you want to add anything to that comment?
Um, yeah, Mike could ask me to call in tonight in case there were questions. So we have 60 days from the bid opening to award the project. Going back, I believe that was May 13th, so June 13th. So we have a couple of weeks, two, three weeks left. But we've got to get the right-of-way issue cleared up to get SRF concurrence to award the project. Or, like you say, it may get pushed into next season, or you guys have a pretty short window for construction down there.
The Chad drop dead date?
Um, I, honor about July 13th, we have to award it. We have 60 days from the bid opening.
Okay. So that'd be like July 12th, 31 days in May.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so second week. So we have, we have another meeting between now and then.
Yeah. But also, again, timeliness of actually getting in front of a judge, doing those, if needed. But also, again, appraisers, I work in real estate, I get to work with appraisers. And I know how timely they can be. So that would just be my concern. It's just, this timeline is very tight.
My-
And, anyway.
My, my request to council would be that we go ahead and approve this. Now, having said that, I am desirous of the most expedient resolution, and also the resolution that has the, the property owner as happy as possible. So I am, I mean, from, from day one, our, our, our goal has been to acquire this. I think, it is my belief that is beneficial to the property owner. If there's an easement, they may get nothing for it. So I think in some ways it's cleaner, and, and like I said, I certainly don't like anything that feels like a city buffering their way in. This is, this is America, this is the West, and, and so that's not something I, I take lightly. My request would be that council goes ahead and approves this, so that we have the option of taking actions within the next couple of weeks. However, I am perfectly content and happy, and, and will plan on having a, a follow-up meeting tomorrow. If we can get a buy-sell in place tomorrow, that basically says there's going to be yet another appraisal done, and we'll lean on that appraisal for the purchase price, to me, that meets our requirements, and I don't have a problem with that. So just because council gives me the permission to pursue this does not mean I'm immediately jumping to that. It just means that I'm not another two weeks out, which means we probably miss our date.
Is there a way that we can amend this, and say, if buy-sell has not been met by a date, then you can execute this?
It is council's resolution. They may modify it as they would like.
I don't like this being put in other people's hands who don't have the concerns we have. And this could just go longer and longer. So I'm, I'm with you, Mayor. I'd like to vote for it tonight.
Any further discussion at the table? Councilmember Conley.
How long have you been working with it, on this?
A few months since it was first raised to our attention.
Two months, three months?
I, I would say at least three months. Don't, don't quote me on that, but-
And we haven't actually gotten anywhere?
Um, no. In fact, when, when this was raised last time, and, and I had spoken with the property owner, I had mentioned that I was going to put both the buy-sell, I had the buy-sell prepared, and, and the resolution to, to move forward without it. At that point, I indicated that we had a two-week period before I kind of felt like we were being pushed into, to time zero. And my understanding at that point, which I had relayed on to council, is that the expectation was that there would be an appraisal done in that timeframe, and if that appraisal came back with a better number, I had zero objection of moving forward with that number. I learned today that that appraisal has not happened yet, and part of the reason that was provided is there needed to be a buy-sell there, which is why I said if, if, if that is, if, if that is a requirement, we can, we can build a buy-sell that has a contingent appraisal built into it, and get a signature, and I'm happy to do that tomorrow. And I, and I said, I'll, I'll pursue that first, because that's better all the way around.
And it's my experience as a real estate broker, is that you don't have to have a buy-sell in order to do an appraisal.
Agreed.
Okay. I'm, I'm just relaying information as it was shared with me.
That's all right.
Okay. Further discussion at the table? All right. I'm going to go ahead and call. Question on the motion. Can we get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yeah.
Davis?
Can I ask a question? Or is it too late?
It's too late, I'm sorry.
Too late, okay, that's right. Um, yes.
Ronnie?
Yes, with the hope that we can move forward with the other options.
I agree.
Rude?
Sorry.
Yes. Okay. Tupe?
Yeah. Okay. Six-zero, the motion passes. However, I will offer my commitment both to the council and to the property owner, that just because I have this arrow in my quiver, I will not deploy it. So I will reach out tomorrow and see what we can do to see if we can come up with another arrangement prior to moving on with those options.
I am confident that you heard the hesitancy in our voices.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. I will entertain a motion for 835.
I move to approve Ordinance 835 amended, an amendment to Ordinance 835 rules and regulations governing water and wastewater service for the City of Red Lodge, Montana, removing Section 10-10-24, comma, 10-10-25, and updating Section 10-7-11, period, or dot, A dot three of the city code.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion from Councilmember Conley, second from Councilmember Daniels. I'm sorry, Councilmember Daniels, what was the motion you were seconding?
Well, I got the, I got distracted with the updating.
No, okay.
Yes.
Um, discussion at the table?
Obviously, there's some grammatical spelling.
Yes. So we discuss this tonight at Landy's and Planning, and, um-
Public Works.
Public Works. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm like out of it. Yes, thank you. So at Public Works meeting tonight, which I was late to, so, since the, the meeting, thank you. And we had a, a citizen there who, and this directly affects, so she did have one of the irrigation meters, and she's had it since like 2015, when this was first implemented. So she had a couple of concerns. Number one was, why? Why are we doing this? You know, it just says in here to the best interest of the citizens, yes. So what we came up with was adding a third whereas, and it would be the number three whereas, where it would say, whereas the city wants to avoid charging a sewer charge for wastewater services not provided without requiring the installation of a secondary irrigation meter to determine irrigation usage. So it just is basically clarifying why we're doing this in the whereas.
Yes.
Is that a, is that a motion to amend?
Well, hang on a second.
I'm, I'm just introducing this stuff.
Yeah. We, Ronnie was reading through it, and-
Because this, for, for me, that was confusing, the, the way it's worded, so-
So here's a, here's a new-
A reworded version?
A new reworded of the reworded. Okay? So it's a whereas, the city wants to avoid sewer rate charges for irrigation wastewater that has not entered the sanitary system without requiring the installation of a secondary irrigation meter to determine irrigation usage.
I like that better.
Yes. Does that leave a little more?
Yeah. So, because this is one of the discussions we had, was just to clarify what, why we're, why we're changing this.
Why we're doing it.
Why?
It's not, it's not in any of the whereas, and it just-
Especially for those who are being affected, it's kind of like, the city council determines it's the best interest, and they're kind of like, what does that mean?
Based on what?
Based on what?
What are you, what, like, what?
Yeah. No, that's okay. We're just, we're just-
Okay. All right. Councilmember Tupe?
I think that's great. I think it's important, but clear whereas is misunderstood why things were happening.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So, so do I hear a motion to make an amendment?
I move to amend a, or include, and add a whereas, to whereas the city wants to avoid sewer rate charges for irrigation wastewater that has not entered the sanitary system without requiring the installation of a secondary irrigation meter to determine irrigation usage.
I second that.
Thank you.
I have a motion from Councilmember Daniels, and second from Councilmember Conley. Discussion on the motion. Could you repeat your comment a minute ago?
I like it.
All right. Hearing, no discussion at the table. Let's go ahead and do a vote on the motion to amend adding a whereas.
Public.
Do you want to do a public hearing before we-
Not on that, because we'll do that one, get to the main motion.
Okay. Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupe?
Yes.
That motion to amend passes, six-zero. Further discussion, we're back to the main motion.
So, the other thing, go ahead.
No, I think you're going where I'm going.
Okay. Well, the other thing that was brought to our attention is, and I should have caught this, but I really was only reading the changes to this ordinance, was that on the second page, it talks about, under B, C, D, and E, that on how complaints are filed, and that we are, they're supposed to go to the city council, and that the city council will file, shall advise the public works director of the need for an investigation or a report of an investigation, and that consideration of the complaint, that we're also going to be appointed to a complaints committee. And like, none of this, that I know of, has been, exists or has been done.
No. But the, the other question I have, though, is, because I know with, if currently, like, anything, if somebody comes in with an issue with what they're being charged or whatever, the public works director usually handles it. But I'm not saying all of this, but there needs to be a process for a, a user, customer. If they aren't happy with what the public works director, they need another process, a tier, you know, to, to move up.
They need to speak to a manager.
Well, this is, this is, so this whole section is adjustment of, of wastewater bills. So another point that was raised earlier is, as we discussed, striking Bravo, Charlie, Delta, and Echo, that that's a very late development that has not had an opportunity to be reviewed by legal. I would propose that at this juncture, getting this done soon, so we can have two readings, as is, without changes, and, and then 30 days to season, so this can be effect going into this next watering system. I would say that that complaint system, the biggest complaint right now of how it's impacting is that nobody's using it. Having it there isn't really hurting us. I would, I would contend that what we probably do is leave that be for now, pass the ordinance first reading with the amendment that's been made, and then we can go back and revisit that separately to see if that needs to be.
Okay.
I, I, that's just a proposal. This is council's purview.
Yeah, with the timeline.
I, I, I'm okay with that. But I just, yeah, I just think that's a lot in there for the whole complaint process. I don't like it.
I mean, I like the idea of having an overall complaints committee.
Does this apply for every single one?
I know. The way it's written, it kind of does. I don't like it.
Well, in fairness, it only applies to adjustments of wastewater bills, because that's the section it's underneath. So by location, that's where it applies.
Next ordinance to write.
Okay. So I'm okay with that. Yeah, so I-
Any discussion at the table before we go to a public hearing on the first reading?
Just so everyone understands that may want to comment, what we're doing is, we're taking an average of your sewer bill for the month of-
Of your water bills.
No, it's your sewer. It's an average of your sewer bill.
Which is determined by your water usage during the winter months.
Okay, correct. Okay. If you're going to get technical about it, like that's-
City utility bills.
When, when you look at your bills, you have a sewer charge, and we're going to take the average of that charge over the winter months, and continue charging that average during the summer months when you're irrigating. Your water bill will go up in the summer, but you'll, your sewer bill should stay that same average.
I concur.
Thank you.
Further discussion at the table? Hearing none, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. I will go to the room, which is now empty, so we will go to online.
We did.
This is the public hearing for the first reading of Ordinance 835 to adjust the way we calculate wastewater. Going once, twice, three times. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring the motion back to the table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupe?
Yes.
Six-o, the motion passes. And the council president has pointed out to me, the exact wording says we will take the average of the wastewater.
That's why we elected her.
I said, I said, I said corrected.
I might just tell me.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the interim city attorney contract.
I move to approve the interim city attorney contract.
I second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Ronnie, and I will go ahead and, and, and speak for the conversation. So this is in response to the, the contract we have had in place for our city attorney, is a remnant from prior attorneys. In fact, when I was on council, I had made the comment that we really should have the contract written by somebody other than who was a, a direct benefactor of that contract. That didn't, didn't go through at the time, but as a result, our, our contract had a couple of concerning clauses, including a six-month separation package. I was not ready to move forward with the change at this point in time, in part because we have several other hot issues, and I didn't want to change horses mid-race. And, but at the same time, I didn't want to perpetuate the, the problems and concerns that were in that contract. So I reached out to Ray Coons, who is one of the two attorneys that we have used as a contract employee in the past to generate work for us, and had him look at it and write up an interim agreement, and this is what he put together. There was a concern that the timeline was the end of the month when the other one expired, and so how to put this in place. So we actually signed this by the end of the month, but So that is what's there, and because this is such a high-profile topic of, of great interest to the community, they were all signed, not backdated, they were signed real-time, and I came in and scanned them and got them into the system electronically with timestamps to prove that it all happened before the end of the month. So my request now, and certainly I can handle any questions, my request now is that for council to ratify this, I guess, as for us, and put this in, which is basically a three month extension. He still gets the same pay, he still gets the same benefits, but there's no question as to whether this is going on in perpetuity or has a six-month severance attached to it. Council member Rude?
Applicants for, was there going to be an application in the...
There, there has, there will be, but there has not been as of yet. So there will be, basically what I'm going to do is split the job up into two positions, one for city and one for prosecution services. The, the league has a city services, so that, that may be one that we're looking at, so they, they will provide the city services resolutions and proofing of that. They will be putting in for that when we do an RFQ. So I don't have that RFQ done yet, but we'll need to do that within the next three months.
I, I'll say right off the bat that I'm concerned that yet another position is being outsourced, like a planning director.
Okay.
And so I'm not, I'm not happy that this might be another case of being outsourced.
Okay.
People need to be in town, doing their job.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Other comments at the table? Council member Davis?
Can you help me understand it? So, I, I just want to wrap my head around it. This came about, the contract was ending, and you wanted, or the position wanted six month, seven package?
No, no, that was the old contract included.
There was a term within it.
It was, it was one of the terms that was part of the contract. It was one of the things that was problematic in the last contract.
Okay.
There was a few others that I can't regurgitate off the top of my head right now, but that was, that was the one that jumps out at me as being the concern, kind of like earlier, the, the, the buy-sell that came in had a price that was not due, I just, once I remember the big one, I, and, and there was some other smaller things.
Okay, so the compromise is the three month?
This is a three-month extension, actually for the benefit of the city, so it basically keeps us from having to make that decision for another three months, and we have the same counsel that we currently have, he's getting the same benefits and the same pay that he's currently getting, but it's clear to all players involved that this is a three month interim services. There's no implied indefinite, we can put it out for RFP and have other people apply.
Okay.
And, and open it up, whether that be in-house or outsourced, either one.
And when does that process start, out of that three months, that application process?
Be, oh, when does the, well, we haven't, we haven't put it out yet. So, we can advertise at any point in time, but this covers us for three months, so that new position wouldn't start for three months from August thirty first, I'm sorry, May thirty first. Yeah, so this goes through August thirty first.
Okay, and has the current employee voiced their opinion on this?
Yep, and he has, that's signed it, so his, it's been executed. He was involved in the conversation.
Great.
It was specifically, is there anything we haven't addressed here? There was one thing that he had that wasn't addressed in the initial proposal, which is that there is a COLA raise that happens the end of July, and we added that to this contract.
Great, okay, thank you.
So he did, he did have input, and his, his input was implemented within the contract.
Okay, thank you for helping me understand that.
Other discussion at the table?
Well, I've got something else, of course.
Sorry, everybody had a chance to go one.
I'm concerned that the whole thing might be outsourced.
Okay.
You want two positions, but I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned that you might want to outsource everything, and that would be a great disservice to the town.
We're going to outsource city council next. That's a joke.
That I didn't get, but I'm just concerned, because the planning's gone, is it going to return ever? Now attorney, prosecution, court date, having someone travel in? I'm totally against outsourcing, because of precedent, precedence.
And, and we have had that in the past for, for most of our time as a history, as a, as a city, by the way.
But, I'm, just voicing my opinion.
And I'm, and I'm good with that.
And I'm, I will be diligent.
And I, and I will hear that opinion again, so noted.
Yes.
All right. Council member Davis?
So, the concern with the outsourcing, you're going to open it up to public, right?
Yeah.
Where a local person can apply, just as well as anyone else.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that would be considered in, if, if, if we go with that approach, it'll, it'll be open. So one of the concerns, one of the biggest concerns is cost savings. So, we're paying a full-time position, how much are we spending for a full-time position, and are we getting the best services for both the city attorney and for prosecutor? Those are kind of two different hats. So, in the past, we have had times when those hats have been worn by locals, so Ray Coons has been one who's, who's done interim services for us before, Sam Painter, where is Sam located? He's in Billings or something?
Billings.
Yeah, so, and, and there's, there's, there's actually a couple of different firms that specialize, there's, there's, there's league, there's also a firm in Billings, that that's all they do is municipal resolutions and stuff. So there's a certain value in having them with that expertise. So I understand the concern, and, but, but in fairness, that's not what this discussion is. This discussion is to keep this one in place for three months whilst we have the next discussion. And I have a sneak peek at what, what, and input's going to be. Any further discussions on the motion on the table? All right, hearing none, can I get a vote, please?
Conlee?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupeen?
Yes.
Six zero, the motion passes, thank you. That concludes the action part of the meeting. Next, what we do for, for the audience is we move into discussion of items that, this is council work session, these are items that are on the discussion for moving forward. So first off, what we will do for public health and safety, and I will look to committee chair Conlee to give us an update on this morning's meeting.
Yes, we were lucky we had Dan from Dish Wildlife and Park attend our meeting, because we are discussing the problem with human-bear conflicts, and bears having to be euthanized, is a nice way of saying it. And it was more or less discussed that a lot of our trash cans, that the latches themselves no longer work properly, and I understand from the earlier comments from the mayor that he's addressing that, that concern, and they're doing a, an inventory of the trash cans that really aren't latching properly. But we also had a discussion about finding people who put tape over their latch, because they want to use one hand to open the lid and one to put the trash in. And, you know, we normally have to put the trash down to open the lid, so, yeah, so we did discuss perhaps looking at some fines, starting at a hundred dollars when it's intentional. And we understand that there are some people, especially according to Dan, that continue to feed the deer, which attracts the bear, bears. We also...
And the turkeys.
And the turkeys, oh yeah. And he also said that one of the big problems are bird feeders, as we all know. Now, Gardener has a ban on bird feeders during the summer months, that they can feed the birds between December first and March first, which is when the birds really need it anyway. The problem that we kind of walked around is, is people can get bird feed anywhere, so actually trying to ask Ace or whoever not to sell it here doesn't really do the deal. So we did talk about perhaps having a sign there that said, you know, feed a bird, kill a bear, although we did hear that somebody out, I think south of town, has his bird feeder on his roof. So. So you can see the, the problem there. We also talked about contractors throwing their lunch, excess lunch in the dumpsters that were meant for strictly contractors, and we were talking about maybe having a blue, having them require a blue hauler for their secured trash, that's food, attractants. Anyway, overloaded trash cans, there was really no resolution, except that we recognize that we have an issue.
So the, the changes that I had noted, that we would see in an updated ordinance, that I guess it's good to get council's input on, is the first thing is that there would be a penalty, and, and again, Sandy mentioned that a hundred dollars is what was anticipated, fifty seemed low, that it would be something you, it would be a penalty if you purposely disabled the can from functioning. And again, and this wouldn't say there's a warning, and kind of like we do with the snow, there'd just be a penalty, but officers have the discretion of, you know, issuing a warning, as they do with all other things.
Are you going to find the city for disabling all the cans on Main Street? That used to be bear resistant and have latches?
If, if, if they are there, we'll need, we'll need to look at that.
Yeah, they, they used to have a, a latching mechanism, so nobody could get into them. And the city went through and got rid of all those, because none of the tourists could figure out how...
These are not the bear cans, these are the cans that we have on Broadway.
Yeah, they used to be bear resistant, they're bear-proof.
Okay.
And, but no one could figure out the locking mechanism, so the city went through and took out all of the...
I, I think that's a fair discussion before we put that into the ordinance, so. The second one was a more general one, that just said, not properly securing trash with attractants in a bear-resistant container. So again, that kind of fits what we're doing. So that was kind of like if people are overstacking, or if they're putting bear, you know, attractants next to their garbage can with rib bones in it, grass clippings, it's okay, this was just kind of a general, if it was an attractant and it wasn't properly secured, that was a fine, fine thing there.
Okay.
And then the third element as part of that ordinance is something similar to the tall grass, where there would be an anonymous reporting thing, so somebody could say, here's, here's a can that the city can then go take action on, and, and go talk and, somebody and then follow it up with a, we can give them a letter, but follow it up with citation if needed. So those were the three kind of actionable things that came up in that. Council member Tupeen?
I raise the hand this time, I'm learning. With that reporting system, is there also a way besides calling into the city or sending an email, that I think the same way that we have contact forms, it might be helpful to have a form submission for trash cans, just when there is issues with them? Because I think, one, that makes it really easy to show a big, long list of all the complaints that the citizens have to whichever trash provider we end up going with, and then, two, just makes it a much easier process for people to get to quickly. I know this is kind of outside of that ordinance.
Yeah, there's, there was several things that were, that were educational, so for instance, like, the bird feeders were mentioned, but like, there's a video about how to feed birds in the bear community, and so like, even, and, and there's a, there's a, there's a question, so there's a lot of things that we can be doing, we're doing an inventory to identify those, we're talking about putting a scan code on the cans themselves, so people can scan that and see a video on how to open it, a little QR code on there. So there are several things that we're doing education-wise, this is just the ordinance part to put some teeth into it.
And then work...
And, I wanted to say, and then, that kind of going back to the bird feeder one, that didn't really come out of this, that I'm, I'm curious to see if that's something that council has an interest in. The recommendation or, the, the example is given, is it doesn't say you can't have bird feeders, but it basically says, if you're going to have bird feeders, you need to have another mechanism in place to help make sure that they're not bear attractants, AKA an electric fence, I think was the specific example.
Yeah, electric fence.
Bear fence.
Yeah, I, I guess, a bird feeder, even if you have an electric fence around it, can still be a bear attractant, because they, because they drop the seeds down onto the ground.
Yeah.
But, but the fence would protect, but that doesn't mean they drop all the seeds like they're eating.
Plus, they're going to be able to smell that seed anyway, it's still going to bring them in.
Yeah, so again, that's, that's another decision for council to make, and, and if councils, if we can ascertain at this point that the, the feeling is, yeah, we don't want to go there, that's fine too.
And then the only other recommendation I would have just is for having this discussion, and this is actually probably more of a public works discussion, but in terms of the cans being provided in, from the republic, from our experience, because we work with city as well as county cans, ones with the carabiners on top on the lids versus the latch cans, we have found those to be way more effective against bears.
Where, where's, how do you explain? I have yet to see a carabiner.
Well, it's because they're, they're the ones that are outside in the county that we've been getting, and they're awesome, because it's just two carabiners on each side, and so it's easier for the public to open, but they're way more secure and way easier to fix. So, and then you don't have that situation where it's getting stuck and you can't open it, and then people aren't putting trash in their cans because it won't open, or it's getting stuck unopened, so again, a much easier mechanism, plus when you throw it on its back, it doesn't just pop open.
Are those cans from Republic, or are they?
Correct.
They are?
Are they IBC certified, do you know?
I don't.
Because that would be the testing group that tells us they're, they're, they're...
I know that they, for when we ordered in the cans, they told us that they were the bear-resistant cans. So, again, we have been requesting those at this point, because they are so much more effective.
Is that what's in the campground?
I doubt those are at the campground.
I think you're thinking of dumpsters that have carabiners. She's talking about a garbage can that actually has carabiners.
Yeah, it's just like a, yeah, like a standard bin, but it just has a carabiner hooked on the side, and they can't, they haven't found a problem yet.
Okay, so anyway, that was, that's, that's the, that's the stuff that, that we're hoping to have into an ordinance to bring back for, for view. Any other further comments or inputs on that, or council member Davis?
Um, yeah, I think it would be great maybe to put it on the redlodge.com, you know, where it says visiting Red Lodge, staying in Red Lodge, like front and center.
We, we have...
A little link.
Yeah, by the way, we have started a page on the city website called Bear Country. We haven't been, we've been collecting stuff of what we're going to populate it with yet, so, so going back to, to the earlier conversation, the ordinance is a very, very small part of it. The city is actively involved, and we have that bear group that we've kind of created, and we're working with BR. We have a lot of things going on, bear initiative, right now. There's part of it that's just council's piece of the puzzle to address. The teeth.
It is, um...
Council member Daniel?
So it is, I was trying to see if I still have the photo, but I found it interesting also that now, if any of you have flown into Billings recently, or picked anybody up, at the, at the baggage claim, instead of, they used to have the painted pony displays, they now have at every carousel, which I should just say is one giant carousel.
All one of them?
Yeah, it's very comical how that works.
Two.
But they do have giant, I am bear safe, welcome to bear country, with explaining how to prepare, how to train yourself, it has a whole, these huge giant things about securing trash.
Will you please share that with me and...
Yeah, I just, I took photos of it while I was waiting for my parents, and I just thought, I was like, one, it's, as someone traveling in, I would be scared of bears now, because I'm like, oh my gosh, like, they're really throwing this out there, but at the same time, I find it very entertaining. So, yeah, I will share, but I did, there is a, there is a QR code to get verified, to learn how to code this, and it is put out, they are put out by the Wildlife, FDP, yeah, Wildlife Restoration Foundation.
Oh.
Yeah, I will share that.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Conlee?
The other thing is that they did share that Montana already has a code, and the fines run from a hundred and thirty-five to a thousand dollars for feeding animals.
You must be referring to MCA eighty-seven dash six dash two sixteen.
That would be the one, it was A and B. And we did have a quick discussion on transfer station, I believe everybody got the email on the transfer station. I think that the committee felt overall that that wouldn't work for Red Lodge, that people would save up their trash.
And there was a concern about the space that it would take to, to, to serve a town of Red Lodge, it was, and, and we'll, we'll have a follow-up conversation with our trash providers as well.
Yeah.
But, but all of the feedback we've got so far is that the existing recycling facility is nowhere near the appropriate size and space for, for a town the size of Red Lodge.
Can I just make a comment?
Please.
I mean, I, I've always, I've never been against having a transfer station, but to me, it would be in conjunction with having the existing trash pickup as well, so it would be an extra service, not just a replacement type thing, the way that it was, you know, because there's a lot of times people have larger items that will not fit in their garbage can, and they're having to haul it all the way to Clark or to Billings, and a transfer station would accommodate that. So, I, I'm not opposed to having sustainability for, you know, look into the, how, how that would look and how that would work, so, just, just putting that out there.
No, and I, and I have, I have taken a trip or two to Billings when, when I've had a need for that as well, so.
If, if the number one ask is like, where do I take this? If, if the number one ask is like, where do I take this? Where do I take that? And it's like, oh, Billings.
We are, and I agree. I feel like it needs to be in conjunction with, I actually brought this up with my dad who's in town. And, uh, he remembers the transfer station and it was like, yes, but we would also go there to shoot the raccoons and to see the bears. And, you know, it was in itself its own tourist attraction because they knew the wildlife that would be there.
And the last item is, um, the chief said that during the rent fair, they only had thirty-eight calls for service. And it was all traffic and it went really, really well.
No, no, no criminal activity associated with it.
Cool.
So that's it.
That we know.
There was, well, there was, there was, there was, there was one report that was a follow-up post tense and, and basically when you, when you have a bunch of people walking around with knives, somebody's gonna show theirs. All right. Any, any, any other further questions from, from, um, Public Health and Safety? All right. Um, Admin and Finance, and for that update, we'll go to, uh, committee chair running.
So we have covered everything that we went over today in admin and finance, except we are, um, we just went through, um, we're done with general funds in the budget and we will continue to go through that line by line. We are, we won't know the value of our mill on the revenue side until August. So there will be, even though our fiscal year is July first, our budget does not get approved immediately. We're about ready to, um, start on resort tax. Um, that's our next part of the budget that we're reviewing. And, um, hopefully our, uh, department heads will be coming to council to give presentations like they did last year.
I, we've got, we've got four, we've got four meetings between now and when we're approving budgets scheduled. That's why I'm in the process of getting, so starting at the next meeting, we'll be having those.
And that will, they'll be presenting their budget and we'll be able to ask some questions on their part of the budget. So, that's up. Thank you.
Um, would you speak a little bit about what the thought was? I think it was the admin committee when we talked about the police dog. Including incorporating that into the police budget?
Sure. Um, so, uh, Chief Rock was, we had asked him to be at the meeting today because we were specifically reviewing, um, his budget. And, um, there was in their, in the budget, um, five thousand dollars, I believe, for, um, maintenance of the police dog. When the police dog was originally, um, presented to the city, it was that there would be no added cost of the dog to the city. And after, uh, discussing it today with Chief Rock, he has felt that it has been an immense asset to the city by having this dog. It's basically become that officer's partner, the safety involved for that officer. Um, the amount of, it's also trained for, um, not just drugs, but also, um, searches. If there's a dementia patient or something like that that they can't find, it is, it can be used as a search and rescue dog. It is specially trained that way. Sunny, you, I mean, there were several other things I know that he discussed.
I haven't, I'm in the meeting.
Oh, yeah, please. Thank you. I'm just stumbling over here.
Yeah, no, you're good. Uh, so a couple of the things that he said, and I think that some of these terms are important to, um, put in place or just reiterate. Specifically, again, the, there was, there were six hundred thousand dollars in seizures of, or street value of drugs from this. He's also noticed that there has been a, um, a reduced amount of drug dealers willing to make their way to Red Lodge because of our current drug operations. Um, also, and then also has made the mention of the fact that the dog keeps situations calmer. There's less, uh, conflict or heightened emotions. It tends to keep things more sustainable. And then, um, there is one particular word that he used that I tried to write it down, but regardless, one of the other things that we did mention on that is with it being his budget, as long as it's staying fairly within the means of his previous budget, and he feels that this is a priority to put his budget or put his money towards. Um, and he has done a good job of trying to balance his budget out to allow for that. So, um, we see that he's putting that priority in his own budget and I think that it's good for us to support that as well, as long as it's not costing the city substantial, substantially more.
And he also said that the handler had been paying for everything out of his own pocket.
Yep.
So, um, he felt that it's time for the city to.
What is, I mean, everything, food?
So food is actually donated by Shields. There has been some Fed bills and in fairness, my understanding is those were addressed from, uh, a law enforcement kind of, uh, they have a, a, a big pool that's, that makes grants available, that they've been using that. My, my position on it is, is this. When they initially came and introduced the dog and brought it, they didn't come to council, they didn't ask, they basically said, we're gonna do this all with donations. The question was raised, what about in the future? Are you gonna come back? And they said, no. So I am comfortable saying that was the representation, that's what we're sticking with. However, if council is collectively, meaning a majority, is okay with that, I'm happy to put it into the budget as well. And so I just, as, as we do that, basically what's gonna happen is council's gonna approve the budget. That's where you guys will get your say on it. I want to get a sense of what council's take on it is to know whether I submit that in the budget or if I don't submit that in the budget. One of the other things they had in there was that they have that they're updating some of their rifles. And it may be that here's the amount. So you get five thousand for the dog and your rifle budget is cut in half to make that balance out and you can do half of them next year. Right? So, but, but I just wanted to get council's, um, kind of guidance and thoughts on it. I'll go to council member Ruud.
Well, the thing, the things that Chelsea mentioned and other, that the dog is bringing to the process are things we already expected the dog to do. So, I, so I'm not against the dog and all that, but I just think that we shouldn't think it's worth an extra four thousand dollars when the dog is doing his job. So I think it makes sense to me that, uh, we expected the dog to do it and, but why are we asking for four thousand dollars more?
Right now, we're not paying anything for the dog. It's all.
I mean, the budget. But I think that makes sense. The dog's doing his job, but yet they said they wouldn't ask for more money, but they are.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there.
Um, and I, I, I agree, I agreed with, um, Chelsea, especially on this budget. Um, the chief's budget has really not gone up.
Like one hundred and two percent.
Yeah, hardly at all over last year.
And then we even discussed other options to actually bring that down to help afford the dog without increasing his budget whatsoever.
Right. I'm just saying it's not a good, it's not an equal, um, example. Because the dog is doing what we expect, expected him to do. Correct. And I, go ahead.
You know, the dog needs training, the dog needs other things and it, I don't, just because at the beginning they said they're not going to, I don't think that we should be hard-nosed and say, no, you, you keep paying it out of your own salary. That doesn't seem fair either.
Or your own fundraising.
Or your own fundraising. But the bottom line is, is this, this is more than a dog. This is an officer. It's actually another officer. And I've, I'm with Chelsea is that this is his budget, picking line items and saying, you don't need this, but you do need that. This is what we've asked him to do, is to give us a budget, and he's done that. And he feels it's important enough to put in the budget. I'm for it.
I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying we need to think a little better about all the feel-good stuff the dog is bringing that he should have, I mean, that he was hired to do.
I, I will, I will make another comparison that, that I'm sensing is kind of the thing, uh, going back to living fence in Van Dyke Park. It was like, oh, they said this and then we did this, and then we did this, and then we did this. So part of, like I said, there's, I'm perfectly content to come back and, and, and say, this is what you said and we're holding you to that. But, but I, I want to make sure that I'm not doing that just for principle if it's against council's wishes. And, and I think almost what I'm hearing right now is if I put it in there, it's gonna come out of someplace else because that is gonna be him prioritizing his budget.
And that's just good for me and just to kind of reiterate how I feel about it, whether it was a dog, whether it was, you wanted brighter lights on a Jeep. Whatever that might look like, you know, again, it, but what I'm saying is, I am not the chief of police.
No, but, but we are the ones who are.
Thank you. I am not the chief of police and I want to trust that our chief of police is doing his job well enough and he has proven to be doing a damn good job, in my opinion. Even though I'm sure that there's conflict of opinions on that, but realistically, I think that if you have your department heads that are showing that they're doing a good job and they can prioritize their funds without showing increases, I am good with that. If I start seeing that there's massive increases or we feel that their funds are being spent in inappropriate ways and the two pairing together, that's when I would start to have more concerns.
And we did say at the meeting that, you know, the amount that they were asking for and it was within his budget, it had not increased his budget significantly over last year, that our committee was okay with it. But we did put a but, if we see next year it's a significant amount, like we're taking a hundred percent taking over this dog and it's costing, you know, thirty thousand dollars a year, then that's probably gonna be a deal breaker.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, thank you.
And I said, I, I do think that we, and, and by that I mean me as mayor and you as council members, will very likely have to answer to community members who will come to you and say, this is what they told us. What, what, why did it change? And so we just need to be able and ready to speak for that.
Things change.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that. And could anything else or, or questions for Admin and Finance?
Do you want to throw up hands on that moving forward or are you good with everyone?
I, I, I think I've got where it is. I think, I said, I think what I'm inclined to do is add a line item for it. But that there is going to be a decrease someplace else that is a prioritization. And like I said, I think those rifles are probably a really good example. Um, you, you, you have five thousand, you know, you have, you have X thousand dollars. How much are you gonna spend here and how much are you gonna spend there? That's your decision. Make a decision.
So. Are you talking about?
Oh, but those are resort taxes. That's where you're going with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we'll, we'll look at it and figure out how.
Well, and, and I don't want to sacrifice the officer's safety because some of those got recalled because they will fire in the holster.
They're just firing in their pants.
Yeah.
And they are trading in the old ones for new ones. So they're getting a crap.
Maybe even a cons of the ones.
So something, but, but you, conceptually, you see where I'm coming with that.
I, I do. I just don't want to.
If the rifles or pistols are just firing, wouldn't they be swapped out for new ones without the cost of?
Well, that's, 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 that's the handguns, which is separate from the rifles. So there's actually two different discussions there. There was, there was an early SIG recall that has, has long been fixed and I, yeah, I, I, I'm, again, I'm not getting into that nitty-gritty of that. I, I happen to have an awareness of it because of some other arenas, but I don't know, yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna push that any further. Again, I don't, like I said, I don't tell them they, they have to buy SIGs or they have to buy Glocks, right? That's their decision and they, they go from there.
I agree.
All right. Any other questions for Admin and Finance? All right. Land use and planning, and for that, we are going to go to
Apparently I'm on that committee.
Committee Chair Tupin.
Yeah.
You're probably what?
Apparently I'm on that committee now.
Because why?
Because I said so earlier.
That's true. Yep. Um, so yeah, uh, first off, I will defer to Dave specifically about a resolution that approving the exchange of real property is an upward discussion. And this is in regard to the O'Neil property that is the Little Square surrounded by city land. I know that we have had this discussion at the table in previous.
Yeah, well, we did a resolution of intent way back several months ago.
So I will now defer to you.
All right. So this is a, this is a piece of property for the postage stamp inside of the city-owned land. There was a question that came up earlier that I wasn't able to speak authoritatively to. I can now speak to. All of that land is currently considered public, AKA parks, with the exception of the postage stamp, which is owned as commercial. Now, it's also all going in front of the planning board to discuss and make a recommendation about what that is, which will come to council to approve that. So to change that, because at the time that was all designated as parks, the airport actually extended clear over to there because the road was in a different location than it is now. There were several people at the meeting today that actually came for this, but it was people who had concerns. Initially, when this was presented, they had wanted to trade that for information going down the face of the hill. And all the neighbors were, were very upset about that as far as an equity of the land. And that was part of the same conversation we had when it came in. I didn't feel like that was a beneficial trade to the city. I do think as we look at the possibilities of putting out land for RFPs in different projects, having that postage stamp not be a separate owner, um, makes that a little bit cleaner process for us going forward. So that, the whole basis of, of this land swap is so that we have a larger contiguous piece on that corner, which is then the city can determine what the city wants to do with. In my mind, um, I've looked at it for what they call light tack housing or section forty-two housing, which is where a private developer comes in and because they get tax credits, they're able to build, um, entry-level housing. But the one thing that has no value to them is the land, meaning they don't get reimbursed for land. And so they generally go, they look to either land trusts or the cities or somebody to come in and help make that land available. We can lease it. We still have to put out an RFP, so it's not, not like we hand developer X something. There's an RFP process. All of that is a subsequent, further down process. This is just preparing the way so we can have those conversations. We got the appraisal back. The appraisal did not have dollar values and say this light piece is worth that, this piece is worth that. The appraiser's intent was there's limitations within both of them. The one piece is significantly bigger. However, a, a good half of it's actually not buildable because there's utilities underneath it. So, um, my understanding, and somebody raised the, the point that that's not really factors, that the current landowner of the square's intent is just to finish that off, so he's looking at finished landscaping as opposed to looking at our, our, our gravel and staging area for projects. There was a question that was raised, um, about if the city gives up that for staging area, what do we do? And, and, and Mike had indicated, hey, he likes that corner there for a staging area. However, we could also do that staging area over in, just across the street in the same area, which is relatively close. And he and I have also talked about at the airport or at the south end of town, which is, which is very, very similar, um, off of main roads and accesses. But again, just kind of facilitating, the, the, the big goal here is, is getting a contiguous piece of property for the city up in that corner that we can then look at how we want to utilize it. And it's easier as one piece than a piece with a hole in the middle of it. At least that has been my assessment and my assumption going forward.
Does anyone know how that ended up in the middle of that?
Somebody lost a poker game. I don't know.
I think if it was, it's because the road used to run by that.
Yeah, but, but, but it's a, it's a commercial piece in the middle. It's, no, no, the, the, the road used to go by that over there. You are correct. But it's still a commercial piece in the middle of a park. And I've gone back and chased down the original things and I think it goes back to, it was back in the days of Good Old Boys when strange things happened.
Remember that was, um, do you remember there was a first recycling center right there?
Oh.
Remember? Comes down that old road.
Maybe, maybe that's where we can put the new transfer station.
There you go. Are you saying that there was a recycling center there? So that it's possible that it's buried up with dirt?
I have no idea.
Well, the reason why I ask is, uh, Urban Renewal District has to, if, if we wanted to include that, it would need to prove an area of blight. And if in fact there's buried trash there.
Or a suspicion of buried trash.
Then it could.
It was a recycling center, so in theory they moved it to another location. They didn't bury it there, but you, you act.
Well, that's something you usually recycle from.
Anyway, just, just kind of.
There, there were some benefits. If it was part of the URD, there were some benefits and as far as mechanisms, we had to move forward with it, so. There were some advantages to do it, but.
You're running the meeting.
Council member Tupin, back to, back to the main discussion.
Sorry, I just, I, I see that we are getting close to seven forty-eight and, again, apologies, that was not my place to do. But that being said, we do have this resolution effort discussion. Thank you for the clarification on this. The notes that I'm seeing already on this, I think having a more clear resolution title, as we've talked about, whether it's to say, instead of real property near Airport Road, like, again, legal descriptions.
Thank you.
Yeah, make that a little bit more official, proximate space, like the, call it the donut hole, probably not the best idea, but.
And I had asked, interesting enough, the ti, the wording that's there, I had, I had changed it because I thought it was more specific than what it was originally provided with, but we can still. I, if, if you've got, if you've got a suggestion about what you'd like that to be, I'm. I, if, if you've got, if you've got a suggestion about what you'd like that to be, I'm absolutely open to it.
Yeah.
But it ought to be searchable. Yeah.
Exactly. So I would say, um, a resolution of the City of Rev Lodge, um, and I think we've been including of the City of Montana in a lot of these resolution titles, um, approving an exchange of real property between the City of, or, between the City of Rev Lodge and Greg O'Neill or just O'Neill, um, near Airport Road. But I think even instead of saying near Airport Road, just saying the legal description or approximate address.
Or legal description below.
Yeah, as legally described.
As legally described.
Yep.
Can I just ask a, a quick question?
Please.
Um, this, um, land, I mean, that we're exchanging it for, the other one is one point zero eight acres, um, for our point, zero point five two acres, and I understand that there's water lines under there. But is that a buildable lot?
So, first off, so first off, only the green section would be buildable.
Correct.
And it would require zoning change before it could be buildable.
Okay, but they are working on, they, let's say that happens, and it does get changed to commercial, is that a buildable space?
You're, and you're asking me what that would, what that would be marked as, so-
No, I mean, it would, if, if it's commercial, that's, I mean, I'm just, if, if it's anything but park or public,
Okay.
could, is it a buildable space? He says he's gonna do landscaping, but it doesn't mean he's gonna be the last person that owns it.
Correct. And, and just 'cause he says he, doesn't mean he won't change his mind a week from today.
Is it on the rim?
That's what I-
Is it on the rim?
No.
It, it's set in a little bit from the rim. It's not right on the slope.
Because there are zoning rules about, um, skylining.
Yeah, and that would, I think it's close enough that that would be impacted.
That that would, so that would, that would be a problem.
Okay, I guess that's just my question. Is, is this an actual buildable lot?
That's to not try and control the meeting.
Councilmember Tupin.
The other question, I know that when we've done, like, a land exchange in the past, there's been a worksheet or a questionnaire that answers some of these questions. Is that something that-
That, that was, that was done here, and then it was, yeah. And then basically what was, that was done with the resolution of intent. What was missing was the appraisal.
Okay.
And that, that came back. And I actually reached out to, when the appraisal came in, I thought it was anemic, and I forwarded on to the attorney, and the attorney said, "This is what we need." And I said, "Okay, I'll relay this on to council."
And she doesn't call it an appraisal. She calls it an analysis.
Yeah, yeah, what did she say?
Analysis of real property.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, it's not an appraisal. There wasn't a buy sell that, that she went off of.
You're correct. There was not.
Um, yeah, so basically, she's not putting a monetary value on it. She's simply stating, after reviewing everything, these appear to be equal in use.
Yep.
That qualifies then, doesn't it?
Well, it, it does, I mean, if, if it's not a buildable lot, then it's probably not really worth anything.
Well, still, I mean, I would still think that you can appraise something that even if you appraise it, it basically nothing.
I have a little problem with not having a figure on that, sort of appraisal. I, I mean-
Well, and, and going back to it's not an appraisal, and I forwarded on to the attorney and said, "Does this do that?" And, and, and the, the feedback that she gave is, there are no comparables for this. In order to put a figure on it, there has to be comparables.
The appraiser said that, not the lawyer.
That was the appraiser who said that.
So, and all we need in order to do the exchange is to, for someone to say that they're of equal value.
That the city's not getting the short end of the stick.
Yep, okay.
And so we do have to, and our wherethes, we have to take out certified appraisal, because there is no certified appraisal here.
It's, it's a certified appraiser who did an analysis.
Yes, it's a certified-
So that's a, that's a change in the wherethes?
Yeah, there's a couple wherethes that call it a certified appraisal. It's a analysis of real property by a certified appraiser.
But are we still unsure that this is a buildable lot?
The one that he's getting?
No, yes.
Yeah, it'd be the one that he's getting. How, we know we can build on the one that we're getting.
But, well, if you have, if you have an easement through there, he can't build on the easement. So that reduces the size of an area for him to build. Now, I see the green space there, but it doesn't show where the, uh, where the easement is.
Well, yeah, the pink is the easement.
The pink is the easement?
Yeah.
So it runs along the side of his lot?
Right.
Well, and it's okay for the city to come out ahead?
Yes. If it's okay for the city to come out ahead, it's just not allowed to come out behind.
Exactly.
Just, um, yeah, and I don't know if that's gonna take those-
Let me, let me, in the interest of time, 'cause we've got five minutes left, and then we have to extend. Um, in the interest of time, are we okay moving this forward with the title change and the wherethes changed?
And, and add legal.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
And add legal descriptions.
Yeah.
I don't think either, I was up there yesterday, and it's not so great up there, so I, I think it's-
Now, you're sounding like our certified appraiser. That was, that was her exact terms, actually, so. All right, so we will move that forward, but I will work with Chelsea, um, on, on the, on the legal, on the, the titles, and, and then also the wherethes. So we'll have some work that's expected before it comes back next week, but it's clean up, not changing the intent of it.
Yep.
All right. Anything else for land use?
Uh, specifically, we talked a lot about Pride Parks Resolution today, which we don't necessarily need to reopen at this point.
So let's don't.
And then also, uh, we're gonna learn more about disc golf. That is just my little teaser. That is it.
All right. Um, I would like to entertain a motion to extend the meeting by a few minutes, 'cause I wanna make sure we don't close them.
I move to extend the meeting to eight fifteen if necessary.
Right, second.
Motion to extend by Councilmember Ronnie, a second by Councilmember, did you guys fight it out? Tupin? Tupin to extend to eight fifteen. Discussion? Quick vote?
Sonny?
Yeah.
Daniel to David?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Six oh, the motion passes. All right. Let us go to Public Works. And for that, we will go to Acting Chair, Councilmember Daniels.
Oh.
Oh, did, 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 did this hearty chair not tell you she was gonna do that?
No, I figured as much. Um, see, what did we go over? We went over the sprinkler meters in full detail, to the point where I think I got confused, and then understood, and then confused, and then understood again. Um, and we went over that ordinance, and that took up a huge, I'm not gonna lie, that took up our entire meeting. It did. We discussed briefly, um, just pay attention to the C I P. We went over, oh, and talked about the parks, um, mostly coal miners. Coal miners, um, the use of coal miners, kind of get disc golf. There was a question on, at what point did the council get involved in making decisions on what gets where? Um, Arbor Day was established for July twelfth, correct? Yep. And then, yeah, that was-
On, on that, Councilmember Tupin, that, that is gonna be picking up that conversation that we talked about, like the land, change of land use. When does something come to city council? It's a permanent structure, so I'd like to add that to your agenda, work agenda for next time. And just to cover, we did get the second reading moved, so we won't forget that we're doing a second reading next week. You, on the agenda for the sprinklers? Okay. I just, I just wanted to cover our bases, so we're, we're ready to go.
So, up for discussion tonight was the resolution of city council adopting the capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six, or two twenty-nine, I'm sorry. Um, so please review that, um, because we will be voting on this.
Did we get an ad run today, and did we say that the public hearing will be on the twenty-fourth? So, the public, the, the- Pardon?
It runs on Thursday.
Yeah, it runs on Thursday. So, we did get that in, so that will be on the twenty-fourth. Of June, yes, in, in two weeks. Does, does, is there a timeframe on it, that, that fifteen days, so we just, we just did a public notice, and it'll be on the twenty-fourth? And we've covered all of our bases.
So, um, and it's important, um, as Mike said at the meeting today, that this is just a planning document. Um, we can do other things outside the scope of that document, and there's gonna be some things on there that'll sit there for twenty years and might not get done. Um, but by having that planning document in place, it does help, um, show when we're applying for grants, that this wasn't a spur of the moment idea. Um, we've been planning on doing this, and it ups our ability to actually be awarded grants.
Any other questions? All right. Um, correspondence, anything to add?
Just the few letters we got, I guess.
Yeah, and, and those be there. I will add also that we did get, uh, another, uh, letter requesting, uh, uh, resort tax. Um, modification, however, it came in after the agenda, so we couldn't set a date today. So at the next meeting, we'll be setting a date on that. Um, it's on the two hundred and fifty thou, or the two hundred and fifty dollar fine, not the, not the seven hundred and, not the seven hundred and fifty. So, so that's, that's an improvement. Councilmember Tupin?
Have we seen a reduction since we started sending out notices?
I think so.
Well, but, but also remember, we just crossed a quarter too, so- Are we gonna see a flare up? Yeah, I'm hoping.
I'm saying optimistic.
The fact that this is, the fact that this is for a two fifty, um, is, is better than for the, 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 the seven fifty. All right. Um, any, anything else at the table? All right, so this is where we have our public comment at the end of the, the meeting. Again, this is for anybody to, to be heard by the council on anything within the city's purview. Um, same rules apply. I'll go ahead and open the public comment. Seeing no one in the room, I'll look to online and see if I see a camera come alive or a hand raised, or an unmute, going once, twice, three times. So go ahead and close the public comment.
We must do a adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
Meeting adjourned.